From the virtual studios of the Department of Communication in Philippsburg, welcome to this virtual town hall meeting of the National Employment Service Centre under the Division Labor Affairs and Social Services within the Ministry of Public Health, Social Development and Labor. Here's your host and moderator, Linroy Ray.
Good morning and welcome to today's information session held by the Division of Labor Affairs. My name is Linroy Ray and I will be your moderator for the duration. I am joined today by our social media moderator, Ms. Shonda Phillips, in order to thank everyone for joining and tuning in with us today. The purpose of this session is to discuss and explain the policy that was first introduced by our former Minister of VSR, Mrs. Pamela Gordon-Carty. After this policy was introduced, our standard procedures here at the Division of Labor Affairs have been edited by the National Employment Service Centre in order to complement the policy. Today on this panel, we have Mrs. Peggy Andross Richardson, Ms. Natasha Richardson, Ms. Mariah Constant and Ms. Natasha Samwell. We do hope that this information being presented today will bring much clarity to the business community as well as the general public, as I'm sure that you have many questions for us and we will do our best to answer each question to the best of our abilities. With that being said, I would like to pass the floor on to Mrs. Joss for the opening remarks. Mrs. Joss, you have the floor.
Thank you, Lenny, for such a wonderful introduction. It gives me great pleasure as Division Head of Labor Affairs and Social Services to be part of this information session today with this team. It goes without saying that it is the expectation that the information session today, which is geared towards providing clarity on the formerly published policy by the former Minister of VSR, Ms. Pamela Gordon-Carty, which was published in February of 2020 in the National Gazette. For us, nothing is more important than providing and securing sustainable growth and jobs for persons on the labor market. With that comes a responsibility and most importantly, a responsibility to be transparent. We believe that the policy and the adjustments of our procedures will provide that transparency. There will be no success to this without the commitment and dedication of all stakeholders. And this is why we decided to do this town hall meeting and to really engage you and we hope that you'll ask the questions. Before finishing off, I'd like to extend publicly a heartfelt gratitude and a salute, a salutation to this team led by Natasha Richardson for the wonderful work that all of you have done. I know that it took a lot and there's a long way to go still. I end by stating also publicly a thank you to the Council of Ministers and in particular to our Minister, Mr. Richard Ponifleck, and our Secretary General, Ms. Joy Arnell, for providing us with a commitment and the support to roll this policy out. With that, I'd like to turn the floor back over to Lenny.
Thank you, Mrs. Joss, for your opening remarks. I would now like to pass the floor to Ms. Natasha Richardson. Ms. Richardson, you have the floor.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Linroy. I am going to take us all through a presentation this morning. Before I start, let me reintroduce myself. I am Natasha Richardson. I am the Section Head of Labor Markets. This morning, representatives of the National Employment Services Centre, abbreviated as NESK, will be presenting information on the employment policy, what it is, the origin of the policy, the NESK, and how this policy and the implementation of such will relate to our business services and employment services moving forward. I see that Mr. Ray has, sorry, that the presentation has been made available. One moment while I just take control. So today for the presentation, I am going to be presenting information on the employment policy, the National Employment Services Centre, what our, what the impact of the policy will be on our business and employment services moving forward. I personally am responsible this morning for the policy, for providing information on the employment policy and of course, the National Employment Services Centre, NESK for short. And I know everyone is, you know, if you haven't had the opportunity to review it as yet, you're probably saying to yourself, "I am curious as to what the policy entails." So with that in mind, I will be providing information on the origin of the policy, how it came to be, the legal framework, so you know, and what legislation it's grounded, the legal basis for the policy, and of course, the objective of the policy. So I'm hoping once I complete this particular presentation in short, by providing you that information, that the business community and the general public at large can ask as many questions and of course, share as many comments as, you know, feasible within this particular setting. So as previously stated by our department head, Ms. Peggy Andross, and our host for today, the policy was created in 2020 by the former Minister of Public Health, Social Development and Labor and her support staff. The policy was created based on the discretionary authority of the minister and any minister for that matter, holding a specific portfolio, to create policy and/or legislation. In this case, the policy was created to stem the perception of abuse in our labor market. And I say this because there's been quite a bit of discussion in the past and we will continue to have many discussions concerning this particular topic as to whether or not businesses are exerting sufficient effort to recruit persons on the local labor market. As I sit here today as a section head, I can safely say I've had businesses in the past. You know, they placed a vacancy in the newspaper and we had job seekers eager to apply and to show interest in the position. And once I contacted the business to find out if they had any applications, I was told quite frankly, that they took all of those applications and threw them in the garbage. And you know, this is some of the abuse that we talk about when we speak of whether or not companies are exerting sufficient effort to recruit locally. On the other hand, we here at the NESK, we recognize that it's simply difficult to find persons to fill certain positions that, you know, companies may have here on the island locally. That is a recognized fact. It's not something that, you know, I'm going to sit here in the capacity of my position this morning and deny. With that being said, at the end of the day, you know, we are definitely here to encourage businesses to do what, you know, what is right. They're due legal obligation to ensure that they exert sufficient effort to recruit. As it regards the legal basis for the policy, if you've reviewed the policy, you would note that the policy refers to Article 6 of the National Ordinance, paragraph 1, and that's the national ordinance that regulates the employment of foreign nationals. But let me go on record to say both the national and execution ordinance, specifically Article 6, 8 and 9 of the national ordinance and Article 2 and 3 of the execution ordinance, goes into detail in terms of what employers, companies need to do, the obligations and the indications to recruit, but also to work along and cooperate with the National Employment Services Centre to recruit persons, suitable persons here locally on the labor market. In short, I can simply say that the objective of the policy is to ensure that businesses comply with their legal duty to recruit local persons here on the labor market in the interest of country St. Martin. Bear with me here while I get the logistics of moving this presentation along. So with that being said, in short, this policy was published in 2020 in the National Gazette and it was published in the issue number 5, if you haven't reviewed it already. And you can find that on page number 12 of that particular issue. Of course, if you're able to, if you're unable to find this particular, you know, National Gazette issue number 5 online, a copy can be requested by or from the NESK team, the National Employment Services Centre team. We will be happy to assist you with acquiring a copy of it. Okay, so before I continue, I know many of you will be asking yourself, "Why now? Why are we implementing this particular policy now?" Well, this has been a discussion that we've had internally as well because at the end of the day, we want to ensure that everything that is implemented as an executionary body is done in a fair and transparent manner. But you know, fun fact, when we are at our most busy, the NESK team registers approximately more than 1,000 vacancies in one calendar year. And that's quite a bit of vacancies. And to add to that, there's the fact that about 96 to 98% of these vacancies are in connection with an employment permit. So we said this would be quite honestly, the perfect time to implement this policy because right now, indeed, we are in an economic downturn. Right here at the department, we've noticed that there has been a decline in the amount of vacancies that are being registered. This in a turnaround way offers us a perfect opportunity to test this particular, the implementation of this particular policy with our modified work procedures in an environment that is not necessarily as hectic as it normally is. And you know, there is a misconception within the general public that we are responsible for the provision of jobs. Unfortunately, we are not. That is the economic, the Ministry of Economic Affairs and of course, the generation of economic drive and the creation of businesses, whether that's, you know, small to medium or large size enterprises. We are unfortunately in an economic downturn. So yes, there are a lot of people who are unemployed, but we still continue to execute the work that needs to be executed in line with our specific authorities, in line with specific policies and in line with specific legislation. So you know, we view this as the perfect time to test this and to monitor it and to evaluate it as we go along as well. So before, you know, I continue, I'm hoping that some of the information provided to you on the policy will give you a clear indication of the direction that we're going in, why it was, why it's being introduced and of course, I look forward to your questions concerning this specific topic. Moving on to the National Employment Services Centre. What am I going to say this morning? I want to present to you information on our goal, vision, mission and our values. I want to present information on our team and I also want to tell you something about the programs that we have. So what is the National Employment Services Centre? I remember in 2020, when we had to go to Parliament with the former minister at the time, there were a lot of questions about what the National Employment Services Centre is. Well, then, most of you would know the National Employment Services Centre as formerly as the Job Placement Unit. It is the team that is responsible for registering vacancies, registering on persons seeking employment, but also assisting job seekers with finding employment. We held a very valuable session in 2017 with the International Labour Organisation and out of that session, we determined that we needed to make our job placement unit more in line with international and regional standards. And by that, I mean, we are working more now with ISIC codes and the ISIC codes helps us to categorize business types. It helps us to collect more robust data. We are currently researching the best way to implement the ISCO 08 code and that code deals with a system to classify occupations. And beyond that, we have created a unit that provides services both to the business community, so engaging with the business community, as well as services, enhanced services to job seekers. So what is our goal? Our goal is definitely to ensure a balanced and stable labor market in line with the mission, vision and objectives of the ministry. That is foremost what we do and what we intend to continue doing as a team here at the NESK. Our vision is basically, you know, our team works daily to provide enhanced labor market services in the form of a digital platform. I'm hoping many of you have heard of jobopportunity.xx. Unfortunately, that particular service is now not available. I'm happy that we have this platform here this morning because I want to encourage everyone who's listening and viewing to lobby on behalf of the community to make sure that this website gets back up. I won't be afraid to say here this morning, it's very expensive to run an ad. It's very expensive to run an ad here on St. Martin for a prolonged period of time, which is usually necessary when you're serious about recruiting suitable persons. This, this particular website is essential. It's an essential tool to ensure that job seekers and recruiters can meet each other on their own terms with as much fairness and transparency as possible. So I want to encourage, you know, citizens of St. Martin to lobby so that we can get this particular website back up and running. The name of the website is jobopportunity.xx. The last time I checked, we had over more than 1,000 persons register to that website. And I imagine that if that website is back up and running, we can have even more people registered seeking, as seeking employment and we could have a platform for businesses to both, to host their, their information about their company and to host information about their vacancies. So beyond the digital platform, we also offer employability enhancement programs. One of the team members from NESK will provide more information on that as we move forward with the presentation. We also have business information sessions and we also work closely with social services to provide in the provision of material and immaterial aid. And by immaterial aid, I'm specifically referring to financial and medical assistance. In our case, if one, if someone registers with us and they have, you know, at the particular moment in time, they're not able to actually find employment or, you know, due to circumstances, not attributed to their own fault, they are not able to work at the moment, you can apply for financial assistance. And by immaterial aid, I am referring to the close collaboration that we have with the social workers here at social services to ensure that our clients receive the best adequate services that we can provide to help them improve their chances to gain gainful employment. So, you know, as a team, we also provide, we also provide, sorry, I'm trying to find a specific slide, free and enhanced services and these services are based on a subset of values. We instill trust, respect, integrity, commitment, professionalism and excellence. And we try to ensure that these values are incorporated in all aspects of the work that we do here, including our forms, our procedures, our operations and the manner in which we engage with our clients and customers. So you know, that being said, as I mentioned earlier, there are a few programs that we have here at the department. Let me just switch to that specific slide so that you could get some more information. We have a NESK job training program. This program aims to bring unemployed or underemployed persons or to connect them with businesses that have partnered with us so that they can get more work experience. We also have employability enhancement workshops, EEWs, and these workshops really bring alive the aspect of being able to write your own resume and to make it something that is personal and geared towards the vacancy that you're applying for along with the idea of interviewing skills. I think in the past, and we continue to see that being an issue within the community of St. Martin, that persons aren't necessarily adequately prepared to apply, get the job, to know what to do once you're in an interview and also to retain the job. So this is some of the work that this dedicated staff here at the NESK does to ensure that we make persons as ready as possible for the labor market. And this, these are all programs that we never used to do in the past. So I'm proud to shed some spotlight on these programs at this particular point in time. We also have the Biz, which is the Business Information Sessions. These sessions are geared towards engaging with the business community and ensuring that the topics that are presented are in line with their business needs and interests. I think in 2019, pre-COVID, we held sessions with HR specialists. So we invited speakers from within the community who are specialized in certain topics such as tax consultants, HR specialists. And these sessions were well received by the business community. We also, you know, discussed the employment permit and what that process entailed. And we had great turnout at each sessions and these are sessions that we will, you know, for sure, continue to execute in 2021 and moving forward. So we look forward to the continued cooperation and engagement with the business community. I can sit here as a section head and I can say I am extremely proud of this team, the work that they've done and it gives me great honor to introduce them, to tell you something about their positions as well. And I sincerely hope that the community continues to support this team as we continue to support you. Without further ado, let me introduce the team. We have our Junior Employment Services Officer. That is Mr. Linroy Ray. He's our host today and he's doing a good job. We have Ms. Shonda Phillips. She is one of our Employment Services Officer. We have Natasha Samwell. Ms. Natasha Samwell, she's also an Employment Services Officer. We have Ms. Mariah Constant. She is one of our Business Services Officer. We are currently busy with the recruitment drive for another Business Services Officer. So once we're done, we're talking about a complete and capable team to really cater to the needs of the business community and our job seekers. And you know, before I close, I would like to thank everyone for tuning in and just to say that I am definitely available to answer any questions that you may have. I'm hoping that we had a good turnout today. And I will, in closing, like to turn the mic or the floor back to our host, Mr. Linroy Ray. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. I would now like to pass the floor on to our Business Services Officer, Ms. Mariah Constant. Ms. Constant, you have the floor. Ms. Constant, I believe your mic is muted.
Good morning, everyone. As mentioned previously, my name is Mariah Constant and I am the Business Services Officer for the National Employment Services Centre, which means that I am mostly responsible for working and engaging with the business community to ensure that they are aware of what is happening at the NESK as well as recruitment processes going forward. So for today, I will be discussing with you the business services moving forward and what that would look like for the business community. For today, we will begin with the educational background form. The educational background form is given to the business along with the vacancy request form in order to validate the educational background of the non-national in the event that the business is interested in requesting a permit for the vacancy. So currently, if a business comes in for a vacancy request form, there is not an educational background form. However, that form is now being added to the current vacancy request form. The vacancy request form is essential for the NESK along with the educational background form for the collection of data for our team and along with the community. In the vacancy form, we are able to gather information such as which jobs are most popular, which is a question that we get quite often. What kind of vacancies do we have available? What kind of jobs are most available in the job market? Levels of education and which vacancies request, which vacancies are most likely to request permits? So is it construction? Is it the medical field? Which vacancies are most necessary? So that is the educational background form. That's a completely new form that we are rolling out when we officially launch the processes. The next thing is the vacancy checklist form. One moment. So when attempting to register a vacancy, businesses will also receive the vacancy advert template. This template gives businesses a checklist that encompasses the standard by which the NESK will register each vacancy. This checklist highlights key points of information that must be present in each ad before it is placed in the paper. Therefore, that means before a vacancy is registered at the National Employment Services Centre, we have to see a draft of the ad that the business wants to put in the paper. This draft ad will then be cross-checked with our checklist and from there, the business will know if they are able to put the ad in the paper. So to clarify, when a business brings in their documents to register their vacancy, a copy of the intended ad must be attached. This ad will then be cross-checked by the Junior Employment Officer before being booked into the system and assigned a vacancy number. The vacancy number must then be included in the ad before it is placed in the newspaper. In the event that the ad presented is not in alignment with the checklist, then the vacancy will, the vacancy will not be registered. I repeat, if the ad is not in alignment with our checklist, we will not be booking the vacancy in our system. Okay? And the business will be asked to return when it is fixed. The vacancy ad checklist includes the company name, the job position, a detailed job description, the education and experience requirement necessary for the vacancy, a salary range and any benefits, along with the application deadline. All of these things must be present in the ad before the vacancy can be booked in the system. Next up is the introduction letter. The introduction letter is sent by the Business Services Officer, or BSO for short, to the business once a vacancy is registered. So only after the vacancy is put in our system, then the BSO will reach out to you. This letter tells the business the purpose of the BSO and also serves as a gateway to the NESK business survey. More information on the survey will be presented later on. After the introduction is made between the BSO and the business, oh, with the introduction, the business also knows who is their point of contact from henceforth, moving forward. So if they have any questions about the process, if they have any questions about their vacancy, how to add anything, they can speak to the BSO that they are assigned. Next up is the non-compliance letter. The non-compliance letter is given to businesses that for any reason do not make sufficient effort to work with the NESK team or on their own to recruit locally. Things that may fall under non-compliance are not responding to emails in a timely manner, refusing to meet or speak with the BSO with regards to vacancy information or candidate referrals, purposefully scheduling candidate interviews for weeks or months in the future, or refusal to participate in recruitment drives. So here at the NESK, if there is, for example, a business that currently has a lot of vacancies out, we tend to host recruitment drives along with the business. we tend to host recruitment drives along with the business. So we partner with the business to host this recruitment drive. And we've had cases where businesses just refuse to have the recruitment drive. They don't want to work with us at all. That is within their right. However, we will then issue them a non-compliance letter, letting them know that we are aware that they refuse to work with us. The final status letter is the opposite of a co- non-compliance letter and is given to businesses in the event that the NESC team is unable to source suitable candidates for the vacancy. It serves as notice that the business has worked with the team and unfortunately, the vacancy could not be filled from within our database or within any of our other recruitment efforts. So this includes if we host a recruitment drive but we're not able to find anyone or if we just search in our database or whatever efforts that we make along with the businesses that we are not able to um recruit. The next thing after that is, um, one moment, the interviews. So once the BSO um identifies and communicates potential candidates for vacancy, it is the responsibility of the business to schedule the interviews and to communicate the time, date and place to the business services officer. So once more, once the BSO sends the list of potential candidates to the business, it is up to the business to schedule the interviews and to reach out to the business services officer to ensure that the BSO can sit in on said interviews. The BSO will be present at each interview in which a candidate was presented by the NESC. Those are the only interviews in which we will sit in. So once the NESC sends a candidate to the business, the business has to schedule the interview and the business services officer will sit in on said interview. The purpose of this is to ensure that the candidates are given a fair chance during the interview process. And it also serves as an opportunity for the NESC to gather data for future employability enhancement workshops. As um my section head Natasha Richardson stated earlier, we are constantly looking and working for new ways to help the general public. And we have come to realize that interviewing is a problem that many people face. And so we are using this opportunity to be able to identify what are the specific issues that people have when being interviewed and how we can work to fix these problems. The final thing is the business compliance report. So once a business goes through the entire process of working with the business services officer and by extension the NESC, a business compliance report will be drafted and issued to the labor permits team. This document indicates whether or not the business exerted sufficient effort to recruit locally as well as any issues faced during the process. Please note that it is up to the business to ensure that they exert effort into local recruitment as this is in compliance with the law. The compliance report may have an effect on the decision made by the permits team. It's not guaranteed, however, it may have some effect on the decision in the event that the business chooses to move forward with a permit request. Moving forward. Um, one moment, I'm no longer seeing. So, business services. The vacancy waiver request guidelines. So these are the only vacancy waiver requests that will be um processed from once we begin the from once we begin the new um processes. One moment, please. So the vacancy waiver request guidelines. So from now on, waiver requests for teachers, medical professionals and professions that promote the national interest or development of country St. Martin will be honored. Any vacancy waiver request outside of that will no longer be processed. So please take note of this. Yes, so educators, medical professionals and professions that promote the national interest or development of country St. Martin. The business survey. As I mentioned earlier, when the introduction email is sent from the business service officer, there is a link attached to our business survey. The business survey seeks to gather data for the National Employment Services Centre that we will later use to either improve our processes or our general working relationship with the business community. The survey asks questions such as the workforce challenges that the businesses are currently in facing, their current rec- recruitment processes. So how are they lo- currently looking for people within the local labor market? And difficulties that they have in the current labor market. So once they hire people, what issues do you have with keeping them on? What issues do you have with um training? Things of that nature are all things that the NESC wants to be a part of um, and to help fix within our community. If there are any other questions with regards to the business services side, you can always reach out to nescteam@stmartinggov.org or you can reach out to me personally at maria dot constant@stmartinggov.org. And I'll be happy to give you more information about the business services side of the NESC. If that is all, I'll like to say thank you for everyone for their listening and I'll hand the mic back over to Mr. Len Roy Ray.
Thank you, Ms. Constant. I will now pass the floor to Ms. Natasha Samuel, our employment services officer. Ms. Samuel, you have the floor.
Good morning, team, and to all the viewers logged in today. As previously mentioned, my name is Natasha Samuel and I am one of the employment services officers at the National Employment Services Centre. This morning, I will be discussing on the following points. Registration and requirements. To register at the Division of Labor Affairs and Social Services, a person must be a Dutch national, permanent residence holder or someone married to a Dutch national. Aside from that, an employment registration form must be complete. A copy of your resume and cover letter is required. Furthermore, a copy of your ID and certifications should be provided. To receive a copy of this employment registration form, visit the Division of Labor Affairs and Social Services and request a form at the receptionist desk. Or send an email to apply dot nesc@stmartinggov.org to request a form. Assessments. Assessments are conducted with all registered clients at the Division of Labor Affairs and Social Services. During the assessment, a series of questions is asked by the ESO, the Employment Services Officer, to identify the needs of each client. We pay close attention to communication skills, self-presentation skills, related work experience based on the career of interest. And we also evaluate their work ethics and attitude, just to name a few. The Employability Enhancement Workshops. Here at the NESC, we consider workshops, information sessions and training programs an integral part of assuring that members of the labor, local labor market are well-equipped to occupy current vacancies. The purpose of the Employability Enhancement Workshops is to encourage persons to take an active, and I repeat, an active and assertive role in their self-development by being accountable to growth, change and progress. Each module is designed to educate persons on the expectations and demands of the job market so that they can become competitive players within the labor force. At these workshops, we provide, as previously mentioned by my section head, resume and cover letter building tips, interviewing tips, communication and self-presentation skills, conflict management skills. We also provide tips on how to find, but most importantly, how to keep a job. And we provide mock interviews during these sessions. Each set of job readiness skills are in essence behaviors that are necessary for every job and are essential attitudes that allow persons within the labor market to grow in their career. Upon completion of the Employability Enhancement Workshop, persons may still contact the division for additional support or advice. However, participants would have received the necessary tips needed to navigate the job market successfully and independently. Job Activity Lock. This form was created to hold registered job seekers at the Division of Labor Affairs and Social Services accountable for their job search practices. Meaning, a client needs to show how much effort has been exerted to find employment on their own. It is not upon the responsibility of the employment services officer to secure you unemployment. You have to take action on your own as well. We are here to guide you and provide coaching and assistance, but your effort needs to be seen. The ESO will issue this form once the client assessment is complete. Also, it is important to note that clients registered with the Division Social Services between the ages of eighteen and fifty-five, who are deemed employable based on their medical report, will be also issued this form to complete by either the receptionist or caseworker at the time of issuance of the financial letter. Applying to Ads. When reacting to advertised vacancies, requesting applicants to submit their resume and credentials to the NESC, please ensure that the vacancy number is mentioned on the advertisement. This will indicate if the vacancy has been registered at the NESC. Applications should be submitted to apply dot nesc@stmartinggov.org. Advertisement without this number does not require applicants to submit their resume and attach credentials to NESC. However, if you are a registered job seeker at the NESC and you have already been assigned to an employment services officer, feel free to react to the ad and copy your assigned employment services officer in that email. Applications submitted to the NESC in regards to advertised vacancy with, um, s- excuse me, in regards to the advertised vacancy with the vacancy number, ensure that vacancy number is stamped, will be prescreened by the NESC officers. Candidates found suitable for the positions will be referred to the company. The company is then responsible for contacting referred candidates to schedule interviews. So the responsibility is not within the NESC to contact you to schedule any interviews. Once you are deemed a suitable candidate and you have been referred to the company, the responsibility goes directly to the company. Very important note. If you apply for a specific position, we will review your resume and credentials for that position only. If in the future you are interested in another position, contact us via apply dot nesc@stmartinggov.org to indicate which position you would like to be considered for. If you previously submitted your resume, you are not required to do so un- again unless you have an updated version. Once again, I would like to thank everyone for listening and now I would like to hand over the mic to Mr. Lin Roy Ray.
Thank you, Ms. Samuel, and that concludes our information. When it comes to the panelists, we'll now move on to the question and answer segment. And I believe we have a few already, so we'll jump right into it. Uh, the first one we have from MP Bijlani and it's directed to the business service officer. And he asks, how can businesses partner with the National Employment Services Centre? Ms. Constant?
Uh, I'd like to thank MP Bijlani for his question. Um, in order to partner with the bis- the business services officer or with the NESC, um, the business can always send us an email, as mentioned previously, or they can always choose to come into the department and ask to speak with the BSO um, in which, and to discuss in which ways they would like to partner. Um, as mentioned previously, we have partnered with businesses to do recruitment drives. We have partnered with businesses um, just to help with any workshops. Businesses have partnered with us. So we are always open to partnership with the business community because we believe that it is essential. And so once the business reaches out to us, we will always do our best to get back to them and see how we can create some kind of agreement. Outside of recruitment drives, we also do apprenticeship, job training opportunities um, and anything else that we feel can benefit the community as well as um, the business. So job training, recruitment drive, anything of those natures, we will also um assist with. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Constant. Uh, we have another question. Um, it is directed at management. So either Ms. Natasha Richardson or Mrs. Dross can answer this question. Question is, where, I think Ms. Richardson already said this already in her um presentation, but we can answer the question again. When do these procedures go into effect? And where can the policy and processes, processes be found?
Which Richardson are you uh giving this question to? Peggy or my person? Um, I, I think- Team full of Richisons.
I think Mrs. Dross can answer this.
All right, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Well, just to keep things clear, let's use my married name, use a man good name, Dross, and you will keep your Richardson, your maiden name, yeah? Um, thank you, Lenny. And just to repeat a question, they're asking um, when this policy will go into effect? And also they're asking concerning where they can find copies of this procedure. Is that the question, Lenny?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. First of all, you can, any business can email um, at nescteam@stmartinggov.org. I also place that email address in the comments of this live feed on Facebook. But just to repeat, it's NESC, N-E-S-C, teams@stmartinggov.org and you can request a copy of the procedures as outlined today. Besides that, the procedures will be fully published in the National Gazette on April twenty-seventh and they will go into effect on June first. Now, um, I will preempt and ask and answer a question that persons may have. Why is there a space between the publication and when they go into effect? We're really doing that to afford everybody, all stakeholders, including businesses, job seekers, just anyone that has a general interest in really wanting to know more details about the procedure and how it will be rolled out. Space and time between the publication date of April twenty-seventh to the implementation date of June first. So that's really why we have that gap, just so that more information can be shared. But once it's a go, it's a go and thank you, Lenny, for the question.
You're welcome, Mrs. Dross. Um, next question, uh, it's aimed at our employment services officer. And the question is, where can I pick up an employment registration form? Ms. Samuel?
To pick up an employment registration form, uh, persons can visit us at the Division of Labor Affairs and Social Services and request one at the receptionist desk. Or you can either send us an email at apply dot nesc@stmartinggov.org to request the form.
Thank you, Ms. Samuel. Next question, uh, this is for our business services officer. Will these new procedures fit into the allotted five weeks period prior to submitting a permit request? Ms. Constant?
Thank you for the question. The goal is to try to get the pers- the entire process done within the five-week period. But please note, again, the five-week period starts from the time that the added, the vacancy is registered. So anything before that is not counted within the processes. But the goal is to try to get it done within the five-week period before the business has the right to go on to request a permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Constant. Uh, we'll stick with you for the next question again. Uh, question is, who will be responsible for scheduling interviews? The business service officer will be sitting in and will this officer be an active participant during the interview?
So this, as I mentioned previously, the scheduling of the interviews is for the business. Once the BSO sends over the list of candidates to the business, it is up to the business to schedule the interviews and to get back into contact with the BSO to let them know when the interview will be taking place, what time, what location. Would it be face-to-face? Would it be digital? All information about the interview has to be handled by the business or their HR representative. The BSO will sit in on the interviews and will be taking notes. We have ledgers and we also have an interview assessment form that we will be using throughout the entire interview. that we will be using throughout the entire interview, but we will not be taking a active role with regards to asking questions. I am simply there to observe and also to gather data for when we are doing the Employability Enhancement Workshops and also to give feedback to the business to, with regards to their interviewing style and process.
Thank you, Ms. Constant. Our next question is for Mrs. Dross again. And the question is, in light of the controversial policy currently being enforced by Justice Minister Anna Richardson, what implications will these have for your policy and procedures? Mrs. Dross?
Thank you, Lenny, for the question. Um, I'm assuming that the questionnaire or the individual that asked the question is referring to Honorable Minister Anna Richardson's recent publication in the National Gazette with her new procedures as it regards residence permits, or not new procedures or procedures that she will enforce based on the legislation of the L T U. Um, I, the only way that I can answer that question would be that it is the goal of every division, uh, every department in the government, and it should be the goal and the objective of all ministries to work in synergy with each other. So there should never be a situation, or or the situation should be very um small in terms of incidents where one ministry is contradicting the other ministry. So the goal of the procedure, the policy that is being rolled out, referred to as the Pamela Policy, is actually um being done in relation and and um um in synergy with everything else that happens in the seven ministries or across all of the seven ministries um in the government of Saint Martin. So we do believe that it will be supportive of the initiative taken by Ms. Anna Richardson. I hope that answers the question, Lenny.
Thank you, Mrs. Dross. I think it does. Uh, moving on to the next question, give me one second. This is for the BSO again, I didn't work with you today. Uh, what standards or methods will be used by the NESC, National Employment Service Centre during the interviews? So what standards and methods will be used?
So as I mentioned in my last response, we do have documentation. So we have a candidate ledger, a business ledger, along with an interview analysis document that will be used throughout the entire interview process. So those are the standards. Of course, if the business wants to, I can also share this information with them prior to the beginning of the interview so they can know what I am taking note of, um, or if they want uh to have a copy of it for themselves. So those are the standards. It's part of the processes that we created as the NESC um, to make sure that we are getting the right information for the team.
And can I just add, can I just add to that? Sorry, uh, Mariah, thank you for the response. Lin Roy, thank you as well. I just want to add to that, that everything that we are introducing is in line with the policy directives uh, of the employment policy created by the former Minister of F S I. And so, you know, I I just want to make that clear for the listeners and the viewers. We're not creating anything or we're not doing anything that is not in line with existing legislation and/or the policy. And to add to that, the information that Ms. Constant provided in terms of the vacancy requirements that will, are now being introduced, that's in line with the execution ordinance on the employment of foreign nationals. It says in that, in a particular article, that the businesses need to work in collaboration with the National Employment Services Centre to ensure that the vacancy ad that they are putting out is in accordance with our specifications. In the past, for some reason, um, those standards have been relaxed. So we're happy with the existence of the policy to reintroduce uh, this approach in collaboration with the business community. So I just wanted to add that in there. Basically to point out, nothing that we're introducing here today is not in line with existing policies and/or legislation. And I, as I said during my presentation, this discussion is, is this policy is not exhaustive. I can understand and I appreciate that we will continue to have a discussion about this matter and the current minister as such, within his discretionary authority, may deem it necessary to adjust the policy or amend as we move forward and we continue to have this discussion. I think this gives us a platform to test it and to review it and see what works and see what doesn't work so that we could revisit and amend where necessary. Thank you for that um little bit of snippet of time to add that. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Constant and Ms. Richardson. I have one more follow-up question for Ms. Constant. Then we will move on to Ms. Richardson for another question. Ms. Constant, someone asked, is the NESC qualified to conduct interviews for employers in the private sector?
So I would just like to reiterate that the NESC is not conducting interviews. The interviews are being conducted by the business. We are simply sitting in on the interviews to ensure that the interview process is fair for both the candidates as well as the business. So we will only be sitting in, collecting information and sharing our information with the business if they so request it.
Let me add to that. I I think I'm the adding person here today. Even though we're not actively participating in the interviews, please let me point out that the lovely group of staff or officers that you're seeing here this morning have all received life skills training and have all been certified by the International Labor Organization. So if we were to participate, trust when I say that it would be qualified and capable competent persons doing so. So I'm I'm confident to say here right now that you're looking at a group of people who've all been certified, both by the International Labor Organization and with life skills training. So we're not just giving the Employability Enhancement Training Sessions based on, you know, the flavor of the week. We're doing that as competent and capable professionals.
If I may add as well, um, Natasha, thank you because I think that's very, very valuable that you said that. But I think it's also important to add that a- although the the officers will be sitting into the interview and gathering the data, et cetera, it's important to go back to also to what the BSO, Mar- Mariah Constant stated. That information will be shared um with your counter-section in the division with the section permits in the event that the business decides that, well, you know, um, we didn't find a local uh suitable candidate and we are insisting that we do need an employment permit and we will submit a request for an employment permit, which remains the right of the business. However, the information that we have gathered during the interview and um and and information that we think would be relevant for the section permits um, to use and to evaluate the application by, will be shared with the section permits um, during the time that they are evaluating and we um rendering an advice for a decision to be made in regards to the employment permit. So I just wanted to kind of connect that back so that people don't feel that you're just sitting in the interview and what happens now with that information. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, everyone. Um, Natasha, I have one question for you and Peggy, feel free to chime in if you wish. Um, the question is, are vaccinations integrated and or required in any sense in these procedures?
Which vaccinations, Lenny? Thank you for the question.
Oh, sorry. You know, we're in COVID times, so the vaccination. Sorry, sorry, this is my first time. Um, the vaccinations for for COVID. My apologies.
Well, you know, I I I kind of, you know, was hoping that we wouldn't get a quick question related to COVID. I'm kind of COVID nineteen burnt out. Um, it is a reality that we're living in. And in my opinion, it shouldn't play a factor. I know. What I will say right now is that, yes, businesses are indeed going to be responsible for organizing the interviews. And COVID nineteen has all but, you know, dismantled many of our systems and operations here in Saint Martin, but also worldwide. But with 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 the in- innovation of a of a few, you know, brilliant people, we now have Zoom, we have Teams, we have Microsoft Teams, we have different platforms that can be used to host the interviews, which would ensure that persons uh aren't necessarily in the same room with each other to further prevent, you know, the spread of COVID nineteen and encourage social distancing. Uh, as it regards to vaccination, um, I think, you know, CPS, the governments of Saint Martin and all stakeholders involved in such have been doing an excellent job to encourage vaccination. And we're well on our way, but we have a long ways to go. Uh, so, all being said, I I I hope that, you know, with the innovative tools at our disposal, moving forward, we can utilize different ways to ensure that persons remain safe within the community. And of course, I am in support of CPS and the governments of Saint Martin as they continue to encourage vaccination and encourage ma- as many people as possible to get vaccinated so that we can reach herd immunity here in Saint Martin. So I hope that sufficiently answers your question, Lenny. If it doesn't, I'm hoping someone else could, you know, add their tidbits here and there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Um, this next question is aimed at the BSO again. And the question is, when requesting a waiver for a medical profession, must a vacancy form be prepared and submitted?
Okay, so to answer this question, for any vacancy that wants to be added, but any vacancy that is coming into the NESC, the vacant, the vacancy form has to be filled in. It has to be fully filled in along with all the other documents that we require. However, for a medical professional, they do have the right to request a waiver permit and that can be looked into. So yes, the vacancy form will still has to be prepared and submitted to the NESC team so that we can um add the vacancy to our database. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you, Ms. Constant. Um, right now, we don't have any more questions, so I'll take this time and let the panelists. If they have anything extra to say, I'll leave the floor open. If anybody has anything extra they would like to say during this information session. I think everybody good?
Yeah, we're good. Thanks, Lin Roy.
All right, all right. Well, um, okay. With that being said, I would like to conclude this information session. I would like to thank all the panelists for taking the time out to share this vital information to the general public and to the business community. Um, special thanks to Department of Communications for assisting us with this information session. This, that is greatly appreciated. And just to reiterate what Mrs. Dross and Ms. Richardson said, um, the date for the new procedures and the forms associated with the policy, it will be published in the National Gazette on April twenty-seventh and those procedures will be implemented on June first. And um, again, thank you to the business community. I, I'm sure you have more questions. So for that, you can contact us at nescteam, team or teams? I I keep getting teams or?
Team.
Ness team. Okay, sorry about that. nescteam@stmartinggov.org. That's N-E-S-C-team@stmartinggov.org. And with that being said, I would like to wish everyone a great and productive day forward and thank you very much.